We're excited to hear your presentation. If you could, we'd love for you to introduce yourselves. And I believe all of our council will basically share their thoughts on what you've provided. But again, it's just an opportunity for us to thank you for your service to the town, hear the work that you're doing and have a conversation of how we can support one another as we work towards our town priorities for the year. So again, thanks for joining us.
I can do those introductions around if you'd like. So it looks like we have the majority of our commissioners here tonight, and we're expecting one more to show up shortly. And I believe they're all prepared to give a quick point about one of the many things that was in the staff report going forward. Obviously, there's a lot of discussion points that they look forward to talking about today. First, you're going to hear from our chair, Michael Miller. Following, if Marine Capon Javi will enter in when she arrives, she'll be the next. Ellis Weaker, one of our commissioners, will speak after that. Then you'll hear from Tom Spillsberry, Amy Fashnab, Pamela Murphy, and Anjali Vajja. And I believe this is going to be a very meaty discussion with a lot of good takeaways and look forward to hearing what has to be said. So with that, I will turn it over to Chair Michael Miller.
Mayor, you are back on YouTube now. We're up and running on YouTube.
Okay, wonderful. So Chair Miller, I will hand the floor to you. Welcome. And again, we look forward to hearing what all of you and your commissioners are up to and how we could best support the work that you're doing.
Great, Mayor and Council. Thank you so much for taking the time to meet with us. I've been the chair for a couple of years now. And our intent, as Ryan said, is for you to have a brief presentation from all of our commissioners so that we can have a constructive dialogue. I'm going to start out by addressing the diversity, equity, and inclusion that is very present in our community, certainly around the nation for that matter. We've experienced over time an evolving and changing demographic, both locally and nationally. And this is here to stay as well as it should be. And we need to look at ways that we can adjust to the current and future makeup of our community. I've been involved in building four or five different boards, mostly in the nonprofit world or exclusively in the nonprofit world. And I've always had five principles that I've built a board on. Number one, and first and foremost, is the passion, dedication, and time commitment to the mission. And the next four issues are all about diversity. I think we look at a wide range of skill sets, kind of within a board matrix, which I think we have on our commission. A balance of men and women, which I also think we have on our commission. A range from different generations. And we only have one youth commissioner. I think we need to be presented by different, more diverse age groups. And then finally, each commissioner, each board should look like their community. I'm aware that the various commissioners are interviewed by the town council. And I would suggest exploring a different process by involving the current commissioners to help research and recruit and recommend participants for the council to interview and then appoint. I think we could have a deeper reach into the community rather than just posting on our website and a few different social media avenues. I also think we need to examine how a revolving commission might be a benefit via term limits, through kind of a systematic rolling off so we wouldn't lose institutional memory. This, although I know it's difficult, is a concept to keep a board fresh and bringing new ideas and new experiences. In lieu of adding additional seats, I think we could also explore alternates that would commit to joining our monthly meetings as non-voting members. This would allow to bring people up through our process, make smoother transitions, and considerably decrease any learning curve as we put a new commissioner in place. That's really kind of a summary of how I feel about, you know, how we need to adjust to our ever-changing world. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer that or we can move on to the next commissioner.
Colleagues, do you have any questions based on just what Chair Miller presented? Understanding that we'll have opportunities again at the very end. Okay, thank, oh, yes, Maria. I'm sorry, Councilmember Risto.
Thank you. I just had a quick question. In terms of your discussion of potentially recruiting commissioners, do you feel, are you looking for something more formal? Or do you feel like there's a prohibition against having commissioners recruit? As somebody who served on three different commissions in the town, I always was actively recruiting, not only for the commission on which I served, but for other commissions whenever I saw people that showed an interest. So are you looking for something more than that?
Well, you know, I don't have the history that you do. I'm relatively new to the commission. But when I became a commissioner, I got a notice that it was open because my wife had been connected to the commission in the past. Otherwise, I would not have known about it. So I think reaching out to people that we collectively know that would actually have the kind of experience and expertise is, you know, kind of just opening up more opportunities, expanding the information out there. Not so much changing the process, but just heightening the awareness.
Perfect, thanks.
Do you have any other questions? Okay, seen none. So I hand it to the next arts commissioner.
And I believe, Maureen, if you were prepared, you were the next one in line.
Yeah, I'm so sorry I'm late. Technical difficulties. Thanks, everyone. It's great to see everyone. Thanks for giving us this opportunity to talk through some opportunities and challenges with the Art and Culture Commission. I just wanted to bring up a couple of points that we can discuss or, you know, now or later, or just to keep in mind. And it's the goal of the commission to engage in partnerships and collaborations with other organizations in the town. As you noted in the background, you know, the Art Commission was created to be primarily an advisory commission, to, you know, offer advice when asked. And, you know, over the last 30 years, and I guess starting in 92, the Art Commission really kind of took on a more active role in actually facilitating projects. And that's only increased over the past X years. And so that's what we're doing now. And that's what all of us enjoy doing on the commission, I think, if I could speak for everybody. You know, it's one of the reasons we're here is to do stuff and to make things happen and collaborate and just get the most out of the community that we can to enhance the art. So that's something we want to continue to do. And I guess I want to know if that's something that the commission, I mean, sorry, the council wants the commission to do. So maybe a little more direction on what are we doing that you like? What are we doing, what aren't we doing that you want us to do a little bit more of? And even have us go and investigate and research other things that you've seen in other communities that you want us to be looking into. And secondly, I think one of the concerns we've had, and it kind of keeps popping up, it's keeping the Art Commission in the loop. What we find is in a small town of 30,000 people, there's lots going on on the arts and culture front. And we seem to be the last ones to hear about it sometimes. Or we're never, you know, like, we're never invited to the table, like, you know, to talk to us about that. That's something we're here to do. And I think it can be addressed by the council and town staff having maybe more of a clear protocol. And when someone comes to and says, we want this to happen or that to happen, or we want funding for this or that, let us know. You know, put something in place where we know what's going on so that we can participate or not in that process.
Thank you. Colleagues, any question on this person? Okay. Let's go, keep going to the next arts commissioner.
I believe Mr. Weaker, Ellis Weaker is up next.
Yes, I was asked to speak about the accomplishments of the commission, especially the Gateway Project and the process of getting there, which I think is a great illustration of how many things have to be done just to complete a project. But the fact is that we've been successful and it's a great model. Our first really large-scale project actually was the Arts and Culture Strategic Plan, for those of you who remember that. It actually was presented to the commission in May of 2016. But before that, there was a year or so before that when the commission was beginning to talk about having a strategic plan, coming up with the elements of it, trying to make sure that it was succinct, that it was powerful, and it was something that the council could really accept and get behind. And from this plan, once it was accepted, we have followed along with the plan. And we've had several projects. The Gateway Project, which I'm going to highlight a little bit more. But there's also the Murals Project we have been pursuing. There's the Art Assessment. And also, there's something called Outside the Box, which is something that Tom Spillsberry will speak to much more later. But it's about the, all the electrical boxes that now are wrapped with art around the town, which are very popular. And there's some other things that we've been doing along the way. We have a lot of other tasks that we just do in terms of budgeting and helping other projects that are art-related. So I'd like to highlight the Gateway Project. There are many steps involved in this particular project. They were all complex and they were time-consuming. I'll describe the important steps associated with the creation of our very first Gateway Art piece culminating in the expected completion in June of this year. It was put back a little bit because of the pandemic and a lot of other things were delayed, obviously. But it served as a model for how we are to proceed and have proceeded another similar project. Specifically, the first commission minutes mentioning the project, the prospect, I should say, of creating a gateway art to welcome people arriving in Los Gatos occurred in late 2016, a little bit of several years ago. There were multiple succeeding phases. Each one was somewhat complicated and difficult, but we managed to negotiate each and every one of them. They included researching the examples of this kind of artwork that would welcome people into a town. We looked at lots of other places around California and even closer to Los Gatos. In addition to that, we ended up selecting sites that we thought would be, you know, very appropriate for such an artwork. And then we finally began to actually encourage people to, through an RFP process that was approved by the council. And then there were local artists. And some artists actually were as far away as Seattle who selected to participate. We had a very interesting series of meetings among ourselves, looking at the various projects that were proposed by these artists. We then actually had a meeting where we invited members of the community as well as the council to come and take a look and to participate, make sure everybody had a lot of opportunity to commit their opinions. In fact, I think we had something at the library where people could come and could post their opinions about this. Finally, we selected a finalist. And I would like to emphasize that we were very inclusive in our selection. And we had lots of different kinds of people, lots of kinds of different projects to look at. And at last, we were able to present to the council in December of 2019. And now we are beginning to see the fruits of our labor. There is some foundation now for the art that's going to go in to a location we think is going to be very popular for people as they come off the freeway into our town. And, you know, we're pretty excited about this. We think we're going to get a lot of receptivity on the part of the community. And we're actually hopeful that we might be able to convince the council to do more projects like this that will be that popular. Yet another important project was one to create a funding base through the arts requirement for private development. That's a pretty long name that I think our attorney must have helped us with. And it actually creates an assessment similar to other communities that had established these many years before us. But the fact was, without a regular budget, it's just not been possible to create more of an active art program in Los Gatos. And we think we're going to be able to have that. We're extremely appreciative, by the way, for the council's support of this and our strategic plan. But we believe the best is yet to come for our commission and for our town and for our council. So with that, I will end my three minutes of glory. I hope people have some questions for me. If not, that's okay, too. Anything else I can answer in terms of information about what we have been doing?
Councilmembers, any questions during this time? And again, we still have opportunity at the end to have that conversation.
Thank you very much, by the way.
Oh, actually, hold on, Dr. Weaker, Matthew. I'm sorry, Councilmember Hugh does.
Thank you. And I'm looking forward to the Gateway Project. I was only sort of in and out on that, on various hearings that were held. Could you refresh me? Are there plans for other Gateway locations? And is there a theme or motive to these Gateway locations?
So that's a very interesting set of questions that we have actually looking at ourselves. Because we had multiple applicants and because not only did we find what we thought was a really great first project for the art, the art that we wanted to erect, but we also found some other ones that were pretty interesting, too. So we would like to come back to the council with some other possibilities. And at the same time, we might even repost the RFP and see if there's any new people who might be interested. There's a lot of talent around. I mean, the exciting part of the project is to discover how many great local artists we have, but also artists who are willing to come from pretty far away to have their art displayed in our town. So that's what we hope for. We would like to do a series. As far as whether there should be a theme or not, we looked at a range of possibilities. One, all of them should be the same. And then we thought, that's not very interesting. We should have some variety. Should there be a certain theme? Well, that's, we've got a lot of themes in our town. There's art, there's obviously the history of the pioneers and the people who first came here, the rugged individualist and all the other folks who came. There are lots of different components of our community. And we don't want to forget the people who are now residents, the new residents. I mean, it's great to see. And I think Mike was talking about the fact that we now have people in our town who weren't here when I first came 35 years ago with my wife, and people I work with who are very international and I'm pretty excited about and have now as good neighbors and good friends. And I think we should try to represent those people as well. So those are the thoughts that we have right now. But we would be very welcome to your input, very welcome.
Great, thank you very much.
And I believe Tom Spillsberry is our next speaker.
Good evening, everyone. I'm tasked to talk about future projects, including murals and sculptures. To add to the answer, Matthew, we have looked at several different, we have over 11 locations we submitted to Public Works as to the viability of a second Gateway or third or fourth Gateway project. We have 11 locations that we have picked out that are entrances into Los Gatos. There's 14, actually, but three of them are somewhat minor. So like Kennedy Road, Shannon Road, they're not really those type of major thoroughfares. We've looked at who owns the land where we can put them. We've done the research to see who owns that land through title policies and title work and worked with the Public Works to see where they best like the projects. The reason why the Saratoga Avenue location was picked first was it was on a piece of property that was owned by Los Gatos at which we could move on quickly and easily. And it was a highly visible location with a good amount of traffic. So once we went out to the community to find the project that we would like to look at, we have a cat of sorts that is on a rock and that's going to say Los Gatos. And I think it's really a great image. It's a new-fangled image. It's not the Leona and Leo of old. It's of a new, I guess you would say, a high-tech cat of sorts. And I personally, I'm, we have somewhat of a disagreement between us, council people, I mean, the commissioners. I think we should brand it. I think it should be the same on the locations because it brands it. So we have that argument going on within our own little group here. But we do have a second and third location ready to go whenever we can move forward. This project has been, like Ellis mentioned, in the works since 2015, basically. And we have worked really hard to try to understand all the locations and all the hurdles that we had to overcome to get a project up and going. The cement pad is in right now between the Paleo Project and Los Gatos Motel. So it's ready to go. We're just waiting for the artist to bring it down and hook it up. And I think we're going to be really surprised at the kind of reaction we've gotten. In doing this, we've also, in our past, to get the Arts Ordinance approval, we went out and did several long-term surveys with the local community. And I want to tell you, I think public art is one of the most important things that we can come up with. More important, and I don't want to ruffle any feathers here, but more important than bike lanes, more important than this, more than important than streets, this and that, everybody wants to see public art. It makes people happy. And that was what we've gotten back, feedback from the community when we did these several studies. So the other possibilities that we have going as far as other projects, we have the Chilwell's Foot Bridge, as you well know. It's been a very successful project for the Arts Commission and the town of Los Gatos. And we are just now in the last throes of finishing that off. We had a project to take the concrete abutments on the Los Gatos High School side of the footbridge and do a tile project via the Tile Company in downtown Los Gatos under Mayor Leonardis. And because of COVID, we've gotten sidetracked on that. We also had other, before that, we were ready with several muralists who wanted to do murals on those abutments as a group from the Los Gatos High School and a group from Fisher, under the tutelage of their art teachers, would direct them and direct that project. And I talked to both of those guys in length, the teachers there. And they're still excited about doing something. But we've been somewhat on hold because of the COVID situation, as you know. The other things that we are looking at is we have, we got some great art when we went out for the Gateway Project. And one of the pieces that we got was called "The Dancer." And it was, it's made basically of old mufflers, but it turns into a beautiful silhouette of a person dancing. And it's by a local artist out of San Jose State. He's been, he's in his mid-50s, he's been around a long time, local guy. And we're really excited about trying to get that in the bus stop area out in front of the gas station across from Chase, in front of Walgreens. It's a great project and that is kind of an eyesore. And we've talked with the staff and we think we have a lot of support for that. And the art is ready and it's from a very, very interesting artist that's local. That's something that we actually love to get moving and going on because that's one of the major focal points of downtown when you come into town, especially with McCarthy's new "Welcome to Los Gatos" sign, which is, actually, I think is quite good. The other issues are murals. We have talked to many, many property owners in town. We have two walls that we can do murals on, or we have two, let me rephrase that. We have two owners that are willing to look at doing murals with us in downtown. One is the Williams-Sonoma Bridge, this building, which is, Mr. Jim Foley handles that for the owner. And he's, we've been after Williams-Sonoma for many years to try to do something. They were resonant to do it with the shutting of Elm Street now and making it into a kind of an interior mall walk. We think it's a wonderful time to be able to do something on that big old white wall that is just sitting there, that is going to have two parklets for both the Luna and the Hero Ranch or Hero Kitchen when they come in. And they are, those owners are anxious to do something. Don't know the, really, the terms of all that yet, but they are willing players. They also are willing players with the La Canada Building, which is on Main Street in Santa Cruz. The brick wall they have there, they're interested in doing something there. So we have, as we can move forward with, hopefully, with some funds from the Public Art Ordinance and move forward with this, we have several opportunities where we can add to the public art that I think is, would be immediate and responsive to the community. I think with that, that's about all I have as far as the new projects where we are. So if there's any questions, please feel free.
Yes, Councilmember Badami?
Thank you, Mr. Spillsberry. At the beginning of your presentation, you talked about a high-tech cat and the fact that various committee members were debating whether it should be branded or not. Can you just clarify what you mean by branding? Are we talking about duplicating the artwork at other locations of this high-tech cat?
Well, my personal opinion is that it gives us a better local image. I mean, people who come into town have an image when they drive in. And if we're saying Los Gatos with one cat and there's an oak tree in the other one and a wine glass in the other one, whatever those things are, I think it's confusing. I think it's simpler to keep, we've gone through this process to pick out a really excellent image for Los Gatos that the community loved, basically overwhelmingly. I think it was 70% of the community that went down and looked at the sculptures that we had were for this cat. So that's my opinion. But we are a democracy in the commission and we, I don't get to rule unanimously, unfortunately, although I would like to, but I can't.
Yeah, unfortunately, did of us can't, Mr. Spillsberry. So Chair Miller will defer that question to you to see if that is on your work plan for the year for discussion. And definitely, council members, I'll see if you guys want to weigh in on those thoughts or if you want to wait till the commission comes back with the recommendation. Director Baker, do you have, who's next?
Yes, Commissioner Amy Fashnab is next.
See if I can get my audio on. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, but we lost you. We can't see you now.
Okay, let's see if I.
There you go.
Now you see me?
And we can hear you.
Oh, we just lost her.
Okay, I guess when I do that, you lose me. So one of the things that the commission has spent a significant amount of time on is the idea of funding models. And we've talked about lots of different things and we've looked at what other communities do. So one of the things we've talked about in the past is accepting private or corporate money for artwork. Since, you know, funding is an important enabler for any of these projects that we would like to do. We wanted to explore every possibility. So we know that the town has these two documents, the Public Art Selection Policy and the Town Donation Policy. And those kind of detail some of the things about how the town can accept donations. But what we really wanted to clarify with the council is, to what extent do you think the commissioners should be out accepting and actively soliciting? accepting and actively soliciting donations for these things? Basically, what do you think is appropriate for us to be doing in this area? That's basically the questions we have.
Okay, and real quick, before we move any further, because I like the idea that you're planting seeds, I'm going to go real quick to our town attorney because I know we're giving, we're sharing thoughts, but I want to make sure you guide us in how we respond to that. We don't violate any Brown Act requirements, given that there's nothing specific on the agenda. Are we good?
It's just, yeah, a different discussion. I know we do have a donation policy. I haven't looked at in a while. So maybe that's, you know, for a work item would be to look at that donation policy. It hasn't been reviewed or revised, I think, since the eight years I've been here. So in that sense, about the last question, it would be more having to look at that policy and see if it's outdated or changes need to be made to it.
Okay, and then I see Chair Miller raising his hand.
Yes, I just wanted to add to Amy's comment is that the clarity, not just about, you know, of course, it's about donations ultimately, but naming rights or sponsored pieces, which I know happens in other communities, much like we've done in downtown where we have our benches with people that have dedicated and paid for those benches and have their plaques on them. Something similar to that is what we're thinking.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. And then Director Baker, I turn back to you on who is next. Well, I think.
There he is.
Apologies there, lost connection.
No worries. Is either Commissioner Murphy or Commissioner Vaidya next?
Commissioner Pamela Murphy is up next, and then Angelie will close out the points.
Great. Hello, Kibish. Hello, this is Pamela Murphy. I'm in lovely Lake Tahoe right now. So I am speaking to you about communication and visibility of the commission. So my first thought was visibility. In the art, the places that we have in Los Gatos, it is not well-known. Examples included the painter's utility box and the children's art on the footbridge and the cats in the trees on North Santa Cruz. I think that we have art that's already been exhibited, but nobody has, it's not on the social media. So we need to team up with the Chamber of Commerce because they have a great list of people that we can send out notices to to even be visible for the art that we've already created. So I think that our art is, our town is known for, we're trying to make our town an art destination. And I think by raising the visibility of the commission and of the art that we've already displayed is a very important aspect to this town and also the art that is to come. And with the Gateway Project, my suggestion, and I know this is premature, but an event is very, it's complicated to put together. And I would like to do an in-person event sometime in October to display, have like a real big, large banner, because you can't go inside, on the site, and have it a celebration that we've accomplished, you know, a statue in Los Gatos. The other thing is the funding. I spoke to, about how much money that we get to do art. And even the murals that Tom is talking about, we just don't have the money. You know, I looked into it, and I think that we get $7,000 a year. So I don't even think we can look at a project to start with that kind of funding. So I want to bring up again how much it's important that we become an art destination and for our commission to be recognized and put on social media. So I think that we should start working with the Chamber of Commerce and see if we can get some art, some recognition. And I think that's it.
Commissioner Murphy?
And I can clarify on that number if you need that. Sorry, that is, the 7,000 euros was a projection that was from the consultant report regarding the arts requirement from private development. So just as a context of where that number came from, that was from the consultant moving forward with that. And we'll finish out with Angelie.
Yeah, so I just wanted to talk about like youth engagement in like arts and culture and with our commission. And I think a really important thing for us looking forward is involving more like youth artists in our initiatives. And even going forward with our diversity and inclusion initiatives, it would be really good, like the last point, to get a social media presence in order to diversify not only like the engagement in our art, but also the participants, I think. And a good way to reach a youth audience is through social media. So we started to work with the Anti-Racist Coalition of Los Gatos and started to work with them on having an arts and culture presence on social media and opening basically a platform to youth and also everyone else in the town to become more interactive with us as we go forward on more, you know, initiatives, whatever we have in the future. Yeah, that was kind of it for me, just making sure that we have a greater social media presence in the future.
Thank you. Thank you. And thank you all for all the great points. I'm amazed at how organized and coordinated your presentations were. So I turn to my council members for any questions, comments. And again, the purpose really is to engage in a conversation. So based on what has been, you have heard, any reactions? Vice Mayor?
So kind of combining what people have been saying and what you have for questions for discussion number one there, it talks about, you know, should they be a policy committee or more than, more than a policy advisory committee or more than that? And one of the things that bothered me a little bit, bothers me a lot, actually, that's why I bring it up. You know, we're talking about all these gateways, and we're kind of saying, okay, you know, we want to put some art somewhere, let's try to forfeit it somewhere. It seems like the Art Commission could do some kind of advisory role to help us plan ahead or get something in the general plan for places that we want to be gateways. And specifically, you know, it was mentioned McCarthy's, you know, we were fortunate, they built a nice wall, and it says downtown Los Gatos on it, right? If they hadn't thought that that was a nice thing to do, we wouldn't even have something that introduced us to Los Gatos because all those corners are owned by somebody, so it's really tough for us. I think, as Tom was saying, just a sec, my dog is wanting to get on the chair, sorry. That, you know, when you have it privately owned, how do we get this done? And I couldn't help but think when Double D's was being rebuilt, that was an opportunity to ask, require, suggest strongly, you know, to add some kind of gateway, since that side of the street, something was being done. And then we went and did the second side with McCarthy. So it kind of felt like an opportunity was lost to create a cohesive entrance to Los Gatos at that point. And maybe we have other places we want to do that. But it just seems like the Art Commission could, the Art Commission could work on. Ryan, you're not on mute. Sorry.
Was landing a plane.
Yeah, it just seems like the Art Commission could help us come up with a policy that maybe is put in the general plan for when this comes available, you know, when this is remodeled, or, you know, something to that effect for the various places in Los Gatos that are on private property, but that we'd really like to have some kind of entrance clearly into the downtown. Maybe something on Los Gatos Boulevard up near where the North Forty is being built. But we don't, we don't have anything that even suggests what we want to do. And so it's never going to happen unless we get lucky, like with McCarthy, you happen to put something that's, you know, kind of nice. So I'll stop there and see if that goes anywhere. I know that staff may want to add in why it's difficult to do what I'm trying to suggest, but I'll stop here.
Okay.
Can I run to a brilliant suggestion?
Yes, so let me call on Commissioner Weaker first, and then I saw Commissioner Spilsbury's hand next.
I want you to know that we completely agree with you, so much though that for the last few years, we have gone out and looked at all of the other towns and around our area who have programmatic ways to do exactly what you're saying. And we are trying our level best to emulate their success. And there are lots of places where if you build something, you're a developer, and you're going to put up something really nice that the town has some say in what it looks like and that there's an opportunity for us to have the decision in the kind of art that we're adoring that project. So we're right with you.
And I believe that's in the ordinance. If I, I'm going to look to my art commissioners, right? The ordinance that we have asked for either, okay, so I see that.
Those were for new projects, not remodels.
Good clarification. Thank you.
Couldn't be adjusted a little bit. I know there's some wiggle room in how the ordinance is applied, Rob. Could you maybe speak to, you know, what is being asked here as to whether we might be able to do something with that opportunity that may be a renovation as opposed to a completely new structure?
And instead of answering that, Rob, could you hold off? Because I did promise Commissioner Spilsbury that he would have the next chance. And then I'll go back to you.
I think there's a perfect opportunity to have an arts commissioner. When you guys have the development review, you have the fire, you have police, you have architectural, you have historical. It would be a perfect time to have an arts commissioner there to look at it and say, is this an opportunity to do something with art here? Is this an opportunity to make a statement here? And that's when we need to get involved. We need to get involved in the development or the redevelopment or the rebuilding of any of these issues. Not that all of them will have a significant effect where we can move forward, but some of them might, right? We have talked with, at length with Summerhill about putting something out there. There, Ellis and I met with them, and we've talked with them at length. And we are still, we're waiting to try to get our hands around what they wanted to do and what, they're in the midst of a lot of things. They pushed us off. But they told us, they promised us they would give an arts platform somewhere in that project. So I think, I think if we could get, to Rob's point, if we could get involved in the beginning before it's too late, we would love to do that. And we would be personally, just another person at the table reviewing what is going on. And I think that's where we need to be if you want to do what Rob is mentioning, in my opinion.
Mr. Schultz?
I don't really have anything to add. You know, the ordinance is set to come forward. It's the one that we saw beforehand. And so once it comes forward, then we could have the discussion of whether you want to add renovations to it or other things. It's right now just capturing commercial, because that was the direction from council the first time around. And again, I mean, you could pass this, and you can always come back and revise it in a year or two years if you think you want to capture more too. But with the commercial, we're being conservative in capturing, which most cities around us do capture. Whether they capture renovation, I don't know the answer to that.
You. Councilmembers, any other comments, reflections? Commissioner, I'm sorry, Councilmember Hudes?
Thank you. And again, coming from not a lot of experience, I was wondering if there's any connection between the work of this commission and the Los Gatos Plan Aire Festival that the Morning Rotary sponsors? Because, you know, my experience living here in town for a long time, that is something that truly puts Los Gatos on the map. And so there's just an excitement and very high-quality art. And in my room right here, there's several pieces that I've acquired. And I feel there's an energy around that event and wonder if there's any connection or any possibility of a connection.
Like to answer that. Chair Miller?
Pam Murphy should answer that, since she's really run the Plan Aire project for Rotary for the last, since the inception. She's been the chairman.
I'm sorry, but let me just go to who's raising their hands first. Definitely, I will go to you, Commissioner Murphy, but Chair Miller, you had your hand raised.
My, I don't have the history here of going way back, although I have participated. I have several art pieces also at my house. I would say that it used to be part of our granting process. In the last year or two, they haven't submitted an application. Now, in the arts granting process, we have, I think, a total of $20,000 that we get to grant out to quite a few different organizations. So we have gone through and consolidated the application to make it a little simpler for the organizations because I think the maximum grant is $4,000 or $5,000 that we can give out. Sometimes less. On occasion, it's $6,000, but I don't think we've ever given any more than $6,000. We have, I know that we have in the past supported Plan Aire, but I'm not sure why they didn't apply.
Mr. Murphy, would you like to add on to that?
Sure. Well, we haven't applied because we believe that our community was saturated with Plan Aire art. So we decided two years ago to pull back and not have it. And that was a year prior to COVID. So we're talking 2019, we did not have the Plan Aire. But then COVID hit, and so we didn't have it last year. We were planning on having it every other year. But this year, we are, the committee's meeting in June to talk about how, it takes us about a year to have the event. So we are going to start talking about it. I'm sure we'll, I'm pretty sure we're going to have it in 2022. So as far as including the Art Commission and Culture Commission, I'm not sure how we would incorporate you. I know that we do have to come to this commission to ask for permits, but I don't know how the recognition, I mean, we could put it on a billboard, but how recognizable would that be? I think that we need to do some brainstorming about that, and I think it's a possibility.
Chair Miller?
I wasn't referring to recognition. I was referring to that we used to receive applications to give you money to help support the event, as in the granting process.
Thank you for the clarification. Councilmember Risto?
I want to thank all of you. I mean, this was a great presentation. There's so much work that your commission is doing. And I was happy to see mention of, you know, incorporating diversity, equity, and inclusion. Because when I think about how, as a community, we can move forward and how each commission can incorporate ways to progress with diversity, equity, and inclusion, the Arts Commission seems like the most visible place where we can, you know, express to the whole community, to the whole world, anybody that comes to Los Gatos, that would be an overt sign of our inclusivity. So, you know, I'm thrilled to see what can come forward. I know the latest version of the Out of the Box does, you know, it's been around sustainability and other themes, but it's specifically geared now toward DEI. So I'll be thrilled to see what kind of artwork gets there. I would say that murals and, you know, the art boxes are fun little pop-ups all over the place. It's always kind of a little visual surprise where you have this annoying thing that's stuck in the sidewalk. And now it can be beautiful. It can send a message. And with the right artwork, we can send some great messages all over town. I love the idea of the mural. I love the idea of the murals. One of the things I was thinking about, maybe not as formal as the bike and pedestrian master plan, but it sounds like what you're talking about almost would be an art master plan where you could identify places throughout town, you know, little nooks, wide open areas, gateways, where it would be appropriate and desirable to have art. So that with a plan like that, when a project happens, when a remodel happens, there can be that ask, there can be that idea. And I don't know, it almost sounds like you're talking about something like that. But I think that could be really helpful. So as projects move forward, or a freeway is fixed, or a bike and ped bridge goes in and we want some kind of art piece to go there, that we've got that coordination in those areas identified.
Yes.
Yes, and Commissioner Kapadzawie, I saw your hand raised.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment, going back to what Amy, Commissioner Amy Fostak was saying was, we'd really like to be able to get a yes or no on can we go out and raise funds from the private sector, private donors to fund some of these projects? Because that's kind of the, almost the fastest way, rather than going through the process and getting and going to the meetings. Can, you know, is, can, can we spend some time looking into whether or not that can happen and how can it happen? If we can identify a fiscal sponsor, for instance, who can act, you know, who can do, you know, act on our behalf, you know, that's a kind of an easy solution. So we would really like to, to have the chance to go out and see how successful we could be at raising funds within the private realm and see where that takes us. And just one last thing I wanted to mention was, we, we always talk about public art as in terms of visual art, sculpture, things you see out and around town. There's all the other arts in, in the community that I'm really interested in seeing where there could be some collaborations between, you know, actual physical art, music. For instance, we've just, what, didn't we just, didn't the town just announce the new poet laureate? And like, has anyone ever heard a poem from the poet laureate? So is there a venue, for instance, can we, can, you know, if I'm on the commission, I would say, okay, we have a new poet laureate and we've got X amount of coffee houses and X amount of tasting rooms in this town. Let's get that person to do, you know, to, to, to be speaking and presenting their poems in all of those venues and, and give them some, some play. And I'd love, to me, that would kind of dust off the cobwebs a little bit, to make it a little more exciting for me to try and get some exposure for other kinds of art and, and artistic expression.
It's a great transition to what is going to be previewed at our next meeting. Actually, we are announcing our new poet laureate. And I'm excited to say, I was part of the interview process, her ideas are very similar to all of yours, where she would like to utilize the natural spots of our town, create poetry and get excitement. And so, so I would love for each of you to welcome her and vice versa. She would also like to utilize existing commissions. If I can, I just want to comment on some of the things that have already been raised. As part of the policy committee work, one of the things we asked all of our staff liaisons to do is send back to you the enabling resolutions for your committees to see if there are opportunities, recommendations for you to, to send back to us, in essence. We're asking you, what will help strengthen your work? And with regard to this fundraising, that's clearly an area that Chair Miller, if you want to spend some time with your commission to look at and provide recommendations to us, we'd like to hear that. I think we'd really like to switch the conversation. You know what you're doing, what is it that we can do to help support you? And, and that's the conversations we'd like to start to hear from our commissioners. I loved the Gateway Project, I love the process and the art that we got to preview. So, you know, I know that was a question of, is it more policy or is it more hands-on work? I, I think all of our commissioners are working, are working more towards more active engagement and I think that's a trend I support. And with regard to social media, absolutely, I think we, with our management analysts on board, and I think Director Baker does such a fabulous job with the library, there's plenty of opportunities there. And I know with social media, you're just always looking for content. And so the more that we can better collaborate, all our different commissioners with the work we're doing, I think that's fabulous. And if I wouldn't mind, Dr., Director Baker, I know the chamber has some work that they plan to do in April to unveil the flagpoles. And there's an event associated to that, do you mind just finding the exact details and sharing that with the Arts Commission? Because again, that's another opportunity where the town is going to visually see the work that the chamber's doing and maybe there's some cross-collaboration that the commission can do with the chamber and just gather some excitement that, that is starting to bubble up as people leave their homes post-pandemic. So those are.
Pardon me, I'll clarify that we, we have been in touch with Catherine from Chamber and she has attended one of the ACC meetings to talk about that.
Perfect, thank you. And I want to make sure I give some time for Councilmember Badami. Do you have any reflections that you want to share with the, with the commission?
I, I just had one thought, was probably gathering their thoughts on what's wrong with some artistic banners across a roadway where you don't necessarily have to get permission from a private property owner to take up their space? Has there been any consideration to that?
Chair Miller?
Yeah, we would love to do that, but I think that is exactly what the chamber is intending to do. Banners like that, is that, is that not correct yet? But that is something that we would like to collaborate on when the chamber is doing an issue like that, that, that there is art involved. That's where we would like to have our, have, give input and give our expertise.
Thank you.
Actually, in, in the past, as far as the banners, we were involved, the Arts Commission has been involved in the banners downtown and design and what, when they were put up, as well as on Los Gatos Boulevard in the Blossom Manor area with, with those banners, the design and the, the timing of those as far as seasonality, et cetera. So we've been involved in the banner projects on and off. So I think working with the chamber would be very helpful. And to Maria's point, Maria, we, we have actually, we have a list of probably 20 different walls for murals and we have a list of 20 different spots for, or, or more for all over the town that we collected. We have not formalized that and presented it to anyone yet, but it's, we have a committee that went out and did that work. I was part of that committee, I think it was Ellis and Amy and myself. And we have all that information, the locations, et cetera, that we could probably get to you or, or to the council if, if need be, or if you'd like us to formalize that.
Thank you. And unfortunately, I am going to try and keep my, our, our meeting, we're going to close this soon. Just because we do have council meeting after this and we have been in closed session since five. But I really want to thank all of you. And I, I want you to see this as an, as a beginning of a conversation. It's been, I've heard that there were lost opportunities for collaboration, but I'm hoping that this conversation just reminds one another, all of us, that there are opportunities. Art is infused in everything we do. And so, you know, neck, names with faces on these little boxes. And I hope that the excitement that we are starting to feel today just continues and that we still brainstorm and think through different ideas of, of how to really make that happen. And Chair Miller, through any recommendations that the commission comes, please let us know, we'll agendize those. But we definitely want to make sure that the ideas that we've heard today actually get executed and implemented. Yes, Chair Miller?
Well, I, I think maybe it's incumbent on us to come back with you with all these ideas and prioritize them. And I think that maybe we could give our sense of, we feel this should happen and, and kind of create a timeline, you know, so that we can look at, at, at what the town feels is most important, opposed to what we feel is most important. But what do we feel that can get done in a certain amount of time? Opposed to, you know, taking years to get a project done. So I think that's, that's something that I would like to push to give to the council that we're looking at prioritizing the accomplishments that we see for the future.
I think that would be fabulous. Similar to our capital improvement plan, there are many things that are on that list. And sometimes we have to make hard choices of prioritizing how that gets funded. But at least it's all there and documented and, and we know that at one point with funding, we, we can get to it. I think that would be very helpful.
Great.
Okay, and if there's any burning questions, I'm willing to take it or comments. Otherwise, I will ask, I will adjourn, I'm sorry, I'm stumbling over words here. Thank you very much for your time. And council members, I will see you in about 12 minutes, so.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Have a good evening.